Tell us if you would like to come forward, please, and please take a count. In order for the tellers to count you, you must be seated. That was my next thing. You need to hold your cards up in the air so they can be counted. The tellers will let you know when you can put them down after they have finished your row. Please do not tear them in half and give them to someone else because they will not be counted. Do not use them for scrap paper. While we're taking account, I would like to particularly thank Matt, Steve, Tom, Joe Edwards for setting up the auditorium. We do have room for an overflow if we needed it. They worked very hard to provide. If we needed additional space so that we could see in the cafeteria if someone needed to be down there, we set up an overflow room and they worked very hard doing that. So I want to let them know that we do appreciate it. And while they're still counting, I just want to remind people that the town of Wareham is going to be celebrating the 200th anniversary of the attack of the British ship HMS Nimrod and also the 275th anniversary of the incorporation of the town. So beginning on June 15th, we have some six weekends of events. So please pay attention to the ads that will be going out shortly for the Times and the dates. You don't need to go anywhere on vacation. We're going to give you six weekends of things to do and to celebrate the town of Wareham. The committee that has been working has been working for almost two years to plan this for the town, and I think you're going to enjoy what they will be offering you. Front section? Section 158. On the right? On my right, 64. On my left, 83.
155.
In the center, 155. We have 360 voters in the hall. We do have a quorum. We need 150 people to act on all money articles over $5,000. So we have a quorum. I will now call this meeting to order.
Check, check.
Madam Clerk, if you would read the return of the warrant, please.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in Precinct 1, Wareham Town Hall, 54 Marion Road; Precinct 2, Ethelby Hammond Elementary School, 13 Highland Avenue onset; Precinct 3 and Precinct 6, Minnetonka Forest Elementary School, 63 Minnetonka Avenue, Wareham; Precinct 4 and 5, John W. Decker School, 760 Main Street, South Wareham, on Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, at 8:00 a.m. for the election of town officers designated in the official ballot to be adjourned until Monday, April 28th, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass., at which time the general business of the town shall be transacted and to act on the following articles.
Madam Clerk, we will waive the reading of the articles.
Hereof fail not and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this 18th day of February in the year 2014, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand for the presentation of the colors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would remain standing for just one more minute. At this time, I would like to acknowledge and ask for a moment of silence for a few people who have served our town and who have most recently passed away. Kenny Slate Home, who served as our town clerk. Charles Vanderstey, who was very instrumental and participated in the Veterans Council, and many of you saw him at each and every parade that we've had for many, 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 many years. An extreme amount of knowledge about how we hang our flag and show our flag and very proud to teach people the proper respect for our American flag. Billy Slate Home and Pam Lefaria, who were poll waddens for the town of Wareham. Billy probably for close to 20 years and Pam maybe for 10 years. So if we would just take a moment of silence and acknowledge them at this time, please. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I would like to introduce the people on the stage. Generally, I always skip over myself and people have said, "Well, there might be someone who don't know who you are." So I am Claire Smith. I am the town moderator. We have on stage with us, to my right, town council, Mr. Richard Bowen. Our town administrator, Mr. Derek Sullivan. My deputy moderator, Mr. Joseph Ashley. Finance Committee Chair, Larry McDonald. To his right, Marilyn Donahue, who is the clerk of the finance committee. Vice chair, sorry. Mr. David Hurd. Mr. Jeffrey Tufts. Bonnie Cattulli. Dominic Camerano. Joan Fontz. Marilyn Jordan. Tom Worthing. And to Tom's right, our Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Judith Whiteside, chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Alan Slaven. Selectman Patrick Tapiano. Selectman Titlebaum. And on the end, Mr. Stephen Holmes. And our town clerk is to the rear table. I believe we have a new member of the finance committee that was newly elected, Mr. Mel Lasrith. Mel, if you'd like to stand so people... I'm sorry, school committee, sorry. It's a little warm up here. Our newest school committee member. Okay, just going to go over a few rules for town meeting. Town meeting does need to have some rules. The duties of the moderator and the government of town meeting not specifically protected, provided for by law are determined by the rules of practice contained in Robins Rules of Order, the 75th Anniversary Edition, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules that are set forth by the moderator. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 39, Section 15, and Article 12 of the October 27th, 2003 Town Meeting, and approved by the Attorney General on November 21st, 2003, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, such a vote may be declared as such by the moderator without a count and be recorded as such by the clerk upon such declaration, provided, however, that if seven or more voting members of the town meeting doubt the vote, a counted vote shall be taken. The warrant, which was duly posted in every precinct and posted on the town website, is the agenda for town meeting. Town meeting does not come to an end until all of the agenda items on the warrant have been decided, either by approval or being defeated, or no action deliberately taken. The moderator will ask for a motion for each article. The vote and the debate will be on the motion, not what's in your warrant. Now, the motions may be slightly different than what you have in your book, but the motions are up on the screen, so when we stand to talk and debate, we're talking and debating on the motion that is before you on the screen. Following the motion, the moderator will ask the proponent to speak. The moderator will ask the Board of Selectmen for the vote of the board, and then the vote and recommendations of the finance committee, and then debate will open. Voters should approach the microphones on either side of the aisle and must be recognized by the moderator before speaking. Before you speak, please state your name. Please keep your remarks to the content and the subject matter that is before us. All comments are directed to town meeting through the moderator. Everyone, and I ask everyone, to please listen to people who are speaking. Please do not interrupt them. Please be courteous and please respect what they have to say. Any person who persists in any disorderly conduct will be asked to come and sit down front or may be asked to leave. The moderator presides and regulates the meeting, decides all questions of order, and makes all public declaration of votes. Now, the tradition of the Wareham Town Meeting has been to allow the presenter of an article five minutes to speak and two minutes for all others who wish to comment on the motion. Therefore, I would ask the body to move that this tradition be continued with the caveat that the moderator will not cut someone off in mid-sentence. But I'll give you the opportunity to finish the end of what you're saying. If you need more time, you certainly can ask the body to grant you that time, but it will be up to the body to decide whether they will allow you to have additional time. May I have a motion for that, please? Have a motion and seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. It's approved. Now, amendments. Amendments can be offered to any article being debated, and to offer an amendment, the voter needs to give the text to the town clerk in writing. The tellers do have a form available for you to use. They will hand it to you. You will need to fill it out, sign your name, and the tellers will bring it up so that we can review what your amendment is. The moderator will then recognize the mover of the amendment, and then the amendment can be debated and then voted up or down before returning to the debate on the article as a whole. Amendments to amendments will not be allowed. Reconsideration. The purpose of reconsidering a vote is to permit correction of a hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or to take into account some information or a changed situation that has developed since the taking of the vote. The moderator's position on reconsideration is as follows. It must be moved on the same day that the vote to be reconsidered is taken. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side. It must be seconded, and it is debatable. It will only be permitted if there was a hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action, or if there is additional information that was not previously available, or if there is a changed situation that developed after taking the vote. Again, non-voters are welcome to sit down to my left. So if there are any non-voters still out there, please make sure you find your way down to the front. Couple more important things. Exiting the hall. If for some reason you do need to leave, or you just need to get up and stand and stretch, please make sure that you use this door to my left. And that's to make sure that we keep the integrity of the voters in the hall and that we don't have people coming in and out of all the doorways. Now, broadcasting and recording town meeting falls within the scope of the moderator's power to regulate proceedings in my discretion, since the Mass. Open Meeting Law does not apply to a town meeting. The moderator, keeping in mind that such recording is a privilege rather than a right, may at any time terminate the recording of this body or this meeting. I have had a request by the press and a couple of other people to take photos. I have allowed them and granted them permission. They are sitting over at the table to my right. That's where they can take their photos from. They are not allowed to take photos during a vote. There is a no-smoking rule on school property, so that means you can't just go out and sit in your car and have a smoke. If you feel that you need to go out and smoke, you do have to leave the school property. I'm asking you to please turn off your cell phones. And no food or drink is allowed in the auditorium. Before we begin, Article 2, Section 26 of the Town Charter states that all department heads shall attend the sessions of each town meeting for the purpose of providing the town meeting with information pertinent to warrant articles. I will now call for roll call of department heads. I see that we have a full Board of Selectmen, a full Finance Committee, Board of Health. Assessing. Community Development Director. Conservation. Data Processing. EMS. Inspection Services. Municipal Maintenance. Police Department. Shellfish. Harbor Master. Town Accountant. Town Clerk. Treasurer Collector. Library Director. Water Pollution Control. School Superintendent. Last and final note. We do have some vacancies on some town boards, committees, and commissions. If there is anyone out there that has an interest, we urge you to go to the town website, fill out an application. I don't have the complete list, but if you want to see me afterwards, I do know a few of them, but certainly we're looking and always looking for good people to step up and volunteer. Does the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen wish to address the body?
I'll make it very quick and simple. I'd like to thank you all for exercising your right to come and vote. This is one of the few times where your word is very important to us. Thank you.
The Chairman of the Finance Committee wished to address the body.
I'm not good at quick. Evening. I need you to remember two numbers tonight, $9.3 million and $4.5 million. The numbers represent... The 9.3 represents the deficit over five years, 2015 to 2019. 9 point... Pardon me? They do this to me all the time, so... In 2015, we will reduce the town's workforce by 42 employees. In the remaining four years, we will lose an additional 49 to 50 employees, bringing the total to 90. Keep in mind, we are funding minimal capital and minimal stabilization through free cash, which means that if we have any major issues or capital needs, we will have to borrow, and we will borrow at a higher interest rate. We will have to further reduce expenses and employees to cover the cost of borrowing. We will lose needed services, such as the library and the council on aging. And FY 2014, we will lose six police officers through attrition and will not be able to replace those officers. Municipal maintenance will not be able to replace a worker who retired. Now, remember the 4.5 million. This number represents a plan to position the town for the future. 4.5 million, that will address the deficit over the same number of years. It will address the overall health of the town and not just operations. It includes a strategy to retain and add back employees responsibly. It includes a strategy to retain services such as the library and the council on aging. It includes a strategy that optimizes the safety of the town through the police department. It includes a strategy to fund a true and much-needed capital plan and stabilization fund. We need to take the action to resolve the deficit, but why now? The answer is, this issue didn't develop overnight. It was discussed as early as 2006 by the Finance Committee, and it was brought to the Board of Selectmen. I know it was brought to their attention again in 2012. Last year, we had to adjourn Springtown Meeting in April because leadership could not come up with a balanced budget that was agreeable to both sides. Still, we had no plan and reduced over $1 million last year from the budget. This year, the administrators for the school and general government sat down together and crafted the budget. They have also brought forth 4.5 million, the 4.5 million plan to position the town for the future. If you want to know why, it's because we have the leadership in place to work together. They have recognized the need for the plan. They have recognized the need to address the problems now to avoid further deterioration of our infrastructure, our inability to pay for emergency needs, and the loss of valuable employees. Now, remember the 4.5 again because it's just the beginning. Our leaders are reviewing operations for cost savings and consolidation. We need to address state aid, particularly the formulas used for Chapter 90, which is the roads, and Chapter 70, which is state school funding. Employee benefits are estimated to grow by $4 million over the next five years, and that remains a front-burner item and the focus of our administration. Let's go to the end. This is a plan, not just sitting back and waiting for our finances to turn around, but an actual plan to address the next five years. The five-year plan is the key that will address the $9.3 million structural deficit. We need your help tonight. Our votes tonight will send a message to the selectmen that we want this to go to the ballot. We want our town back on the road to prosperity. So I'll leave you with a couple quotes. "The significant problems we face cannot be solved at the same level of thinking we were at when we created them. If you're doing business today like you did yesterday, you will be out of business tomorrow." So please, remember 9.3, 4.5, and then vote the future of Wareham that you want to see.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Whitehouse, if you wouldn't mind, if you please would, go over and sit with the press if you're going to take photographs. Oh, there's a chair, empty chair there for you. Thank you. The empty chair, Tony will point it out to you, the empty chair over by the press table. Thank you. Over to the right, over to your right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Does the town administrator wish to address the body?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will actually save my comments for when we have the budget.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a special town meeting that was scheduled for 7:30, so I now will call the special town meeting to order. We do have a quorum. I will ask the clerk to read the return of the special town meeting warrant.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Plymouth SS, to either of the constables of the town of Wareham, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Wareham High School Auditorium, Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass. on Monday, April 28th, 2014, at 7:30 o'clock p.m. to act on the following articles.
I waive the reading of the special warrant articles.
Hereof fail not and make sure due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of the time and place of said meeting, given under our hands this 10th day of April in the year 2014, Wareham Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. And I should have recessed the annuals, so we're in recess for the annual and now in the special. That is the booklet that has the pink cover. If you didn't get one, I do apologize. I think we had more people than we anticipated, but we are in the book, the warrant report that has the pink cover. The town meeting had voted many years ago to take our warrant articles by lottery. However, as the moderator, the moderator has the capacity to bundle some items that perhaps don't or would not have any discussion. The vote would be the same on all the articles. And what I would like to do for the special is I would like to take as a consent agenda Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, and Articles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Article 6 is for a... Was for a lease of a vehicle for the Board of Health. That article would have a motion to pass over. The other articles were all contract negotiation articles, and because the contracts have not been settled, those articles also have a motion to pass over. Does anyone object to putting any one of those articles into a consent agenda? The numbers are Articles 6, 7, 8, 9, Articles 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Hearing no objection, I would ask for a motion. I have a motion in a second. I have a motion to... The motion before you is that Articles numbered 6 through 9 and 11 through 17 be taken as a consent agenda and further that the motion is to pass over the articles. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 18 is before you. This is Article eighteen in your pink book. May I have a motion?
Sorry, power. I move that the town vote to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation sales of cemetery lots and graves, the sum of fifteen thousand dollars, said sum to be expended by the Cemetery Commissioners for the care, improvement, embellishment, or enlargement of town cemeteries, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen as provided in General Law, Chapter One One Four, Section Twenty-Seven.
Do I have a second? Article eighteen is now before you to speak to the article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. On Article eighteen, the fifteen thousand dollars will be used to hire students to assist the Municipal Maintenance Department in maintaining the three-town cemeteries. They will assist in mowing, trimming the grass, cleaning debris, maintaining the landscape, and whatever else the department needs help with in order to properly maintain Center Cemetery, Agwam Cemetery, and Long Neck Cemetery. There is currently a hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred eight dollars in the fund. After, if this transfer were approved, a hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred eight dollars would be left. These funds can only be used for cemetery purposes. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted four zero zero favorable action.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, five zero to one. The Finance Committee's recommendation? The Finance Committee voted favorable action on this article. This article will transfer fifteen thousand dollars from the receipt reserved for appropriation sales of cemetery lots and graves to the Cemetery Commissioners. The funds will be used to fund spring and summer labors for mowing and landscaping at town-owned cemeteries. These, these funds are restricted to be used only by the Commissioners for the improvement and care of the town cemeteries. The balance in the reserve account is a hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred eight, which is sufficient to accommodate the transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Tufts. Is there anything to be said on Article eighteen? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. This calls for a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it is unanimous. Article three. Article three is LED lighting. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the purpose of acquiring and installing LED lighting and related equipment for municipal properties.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
This article seeks to appropriate a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars from free cash to pay for LED light upgrades to municipal buildings, including lights, equipment, and labor. The upgrade would be for the following buildings: the Wareham Police Station, Town Hall, Multi- Service Center, Municipal Maintenance Building, and the library. N-Star subsidizes these projects, and the actual cost without the incentives would be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. The estimated annual savings of these projects is fifty-one thousand, twenty-three dollars, and the payback period is slightly over two years. In the motion, you'll see that we are not mentioning the specific buildings. We do have the opportunity for further upgrades to other buildings. If there were funds left over, I would seek to try and use those for those purposes. If we could not, then they, they would actually have to be closed out and return it to free cash. Thank you.
Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four zero zero.
Thank you. Do I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven zero to zero. We, our recommendation is right along the lines of what the Town Administrator had already said.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article three? Seeing no one standing at the microphone, I will call for the vote. This calls for a majority vote. The motion before you is vote to transfer from free cash the sum of a hundred and three thousand dollars, three hundred, a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for the purpose of acquiring and installing LED lighting. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it is unanimous. Madam Clerk? Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five is before you. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease the property at fifty-seven R Viking Drive, formerly known as the Boys and Girls Club, as further described in a filing in the town clerk's office, for a period of up to twenty years upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate.
To speak to the article?
This article seeks to authorize to lease the building known as the former Boys and Girls Club, which is located on Viking Drive across from the Wareham Middle School. The lease has not been set. This would have to go out to, through the RFP process, and if it were through, and that is the rest of it. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven zero to zero.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article twenty-five? Gentlemen to my right.
Eddie Percivich, yes. Eddie Percivich, Precinct One. Just a question. If this article states that for a period of up to twenty years, you're not talking about making one lease for twenty years, are we in this?
To answer the question?
Yes, you could have a lease of up to twenty years.
Okay, thank you.
On my left?
Yes, hi. I would like to know where you'd be putting the, um...
Excuse me, could you state your name, please?
Sarah Lima.
Thank you.
Um, I was wondering, that's where they house the weight room for the, you know, the high school students, for the track team, football team. I was wondering where they're going to be putting the weight room if they decide to go and put the, you know, the television station there. What's the plans for that?
To answer the question?
Right now, that is a town building that the school has been using. I would imagine the school would have a plan. I know some of the thought is to move it to the Multi-Service Center, but they do have a plan to move it. None of this stuff would happen instantaneously.
So if it's not going to happen right away, so it'll still be there in August? Um, I know they talked about the Multi-Service Center, but I know that the Council and Agent is there as well. So I don't know if that's going to be dismantled. I'm just kind of thinking for the future for the kids because I know this is, you know, important for them, and this is something that they've been concerned about.
Yeah, I couldn't give you an answer whether it be August, September. We'd have to go out through the bid process. We'd have to spec it out. I honestly could not give you a date when this would occur.
Okay, thank you.
On my right? Hi, my name is Valerie Cummings, Precinct Six. I guess I'm going to speak on behalf of, I'll take up the Wareham Vikings Girls Track Team. My daughter has been on that team for four years. She's one of the first students to, with Coach Gardner, for eight seasons. She has spent probably the better part of most of the school year in that gym training. And the girls that she brings in with her every season, year after year, increases. It, it shows when you look at what they have done to perform on the track. And I can only speak for the track team. I don't have children in the school system otherwise. But, you know, three years ago, when she went made it to States, there were three other girls that have gone. This year, they have at least nine or ten girls represented in Wareham High School. These girls are stronger and faster because of that weight room. To take it away from them would be detrimental to them, and to the school, and to the Athletic Department. I think it's, I think it's disgusting that we're taking something else away from these kids. This is a place for them to go, and they, there's never any issues when they go there. They go, they do what they have to do, and they leave. Um, I have, she's a three-sport athlete. In the fall, she played field hockey. Guess where she was after a field hockey game? In that weight room, to train for her fall, for her winter track season. I, I can't imagine what will happen to this track team next year if you take this away from these kids. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. On my left?
Yeah, my name is Joanne. Can you hear me in this?
No, you have to really speak into the microphone.
Yeah, my name is Joanne Bruno. I want to say something about the center, the seniors. Is this where we're supposed, is this where we're going to go? Because we still don't know where we're going, and I'd really like to know...
Uh, Mrs. Bruno, this is not what's before us right now. What's before us is whether or not to lease the building known as the Boys and Girls Club. So your remarks should be pertaining to whether you support or do not support the leasing of the Boys and Girls Club, and that's what you should be speaking to.
Okay, I'll wait till I find the seniors' part.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On my right, Mr. Tittlebaum?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you, I was wondering if I could ask the school administration whether they had any plans in place for a weight room should this article pass, and the weight room had to be removed from that building?
To answer the question, if they so wish. To answer the question, Superintendent Kim Shaverhood?
Yes, I will. Yes, we do have a plan. We're waiting until some other decisions are made about the relocation. We understand that it's been widely used. We are thrilled with the access that our students have, and we would like to expand. What we're waiting to do is to see the location, and then we will start the process.
Thank you.
Having heard that, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Having heard that, I would urge favorable action on this. Hello?
See what happens when you stand and speak?
I guess so. I'll sit down now.
Thank you. On my left?
Uh, hi, Tracy Denton. Um, it's my understanding that the students...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure. Did you get my name? It's Tracy Denton.
Thank you.
Um, it's my understanding the students have actually spent a great deal of time and energy making this facility one that they can use. Is that correct? Are you all aware that they've done that?
You have to speak to the, to the moderator, and you can ask questions, and it would be up to someone to stand and respond to those. There is no mandate that someone has to respond to your questions. We hope that they would, but you have to direct your questions to the moderator, who then would ask if someone wishes to answer your questions.
Would you please? Would you mind doing that, please? Have I done this correctly?
Would you just, would you please, for the benefit of everyone again, repeat your specific question?
I'm curious if everyone's aware how much time and energy the students have put forth to make this facility one that they can use.
To answer her question?
Yes. Um, the girls and boys track team, football team, soccer team, pretty much the entire student athletic body put time and energy into that facility, painting walls, putting inspirational quotes on the wall. If you look back in the Wareham Courier back in maybe...
Do you, do you represent the school department or a school...
I'm a parent.
No, I, do you represent a school department or a school official?
No, I do not.
Okay, then, to answer the question, would normally and traditionally come from someone from the school department or someone...
It was in the Courier.
That has oversight of that building. Continue.
So there's no one who can answer the question?
I, I need someone from either the Athletic Department or the School Department.
Yeah, hi, my name is Ed Rodrick. I'm the Athletic Director. I know the football coaches, the track coaches, softball coaches, coaches in general have worked very, very hard in upgrading the old Boys and Girls Club. It is now, the weight room is much bigger, there's batting cages, there's classroom atmosphere in there for computers. That's, that's the goal for the future. And they put so much time and effort into it, and it really has paid off. And a lot of our kids are using that on a regular...
Okay, just, just to answer the question, we can't give you time to speak, but to specifically answer a question, please.
Then that's basically it. Okay.
Thank you.
Then I'd just like to finish by saying, I think it's an important lesson for our students when they put their heart and soul and effort into something, that it is rewarded and not something that we take away after they've made those kinds of efforts. I'd like that to be taken into consideration.
Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Mike Flaherty, Precinct One. I move the question.
We have a motion before you. Do I have a second? To move the question, it requires a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. That would end all debate. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes by a non-counted two-thirds vote. The article will now come before you, which is Article twenty-five. And this does require a two-thirds vote. And that is vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease the property at fifty-seven R Viking Drive, formerly known as the Boys and Girls Club. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Article twenty-five fails to garner a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four. What reason do you rise? I need seven people to stand to ask for a count. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven people who questioned the count, therefore we will take Article twenty-five. The tellers will please come forward. Is it twenty-five? All those in favor, please hold your cards up. This is Article twenty-five, whether or not to lease the Boys and Girls Club. Please keep your cards held high until the tellers ask you to put them down. In the front?
Section one thirty-five.
Section one thirty-five. On my right?
Uh, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. In the center?
Sixty-six.
On my left?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. All those opposed, please raise your cards. In the front?
Section 122, 2-2.
Section 22, in the front. On my right?
42.
42, 4-2. In the center?
88.
In the center, 88. And on my left?
47.
47. So we have 199 and 160. We have 160 in the affirmative, 199 in the negative. The motion fails to pass with a two-thirds vote. Back to Article, I believe, 24? Article 24. I am going to ask my deputy moderator to take this article. This article deals with an issue to the sewer department. Because of my relationship to someone in the business, I am going to recuse myself from taking this article, and I'm going to ask the deputy to take over.
Can I have a motion on Article 24?
I move that the town vote to approve the transfer of funds in the sum of $400,000 from the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Certified Retained Earnings Account to the Water Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Expense Budget Account for the purpose of purchasing and installing a grease treatment processing process known as Grexilla.
Do I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 8-1 to 0.
To speak to the article?
The recommendation of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The article also received a favorable vote of the Capital Planning Committee. Grexilla is not only environmentally friendly, but is cost-effective as well. Studies show a five-year payback with a 20-year life. The system will actually save money. The funding for the purchase and installation of Grexilla will come from the Wareham Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and will not increase nor decrease the current tax rate.
To speak to the article?
The Finance Committee recommendation covered it. Thank you.
Speaker on my right?
Eddie Pesavich. It says that this is coming from a certified retained earnings. Who certified the earnings?
The Department of Revenue.
Okay. It was my understanding there was some question about that, and the letter for the DOR was supposed to be posted on the town website, which I haven't been able to see. It's not there. And are there any betterment dollars in the retained earnings account?
To answer the question?
No.
No. Okay. What about the report from the DOR?
That would echo it.
Will it get posted onto the town website in the near future?
Yes.
Just to be clear, we did have a second, am I correct? All right. Seeing no one standing, I will now take a vote on Article 24. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Can I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Unallocated Fund under the category of Historic Preservation, the sum of $25,000 to complete the preservation of the old town offices. Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Hi, I'm Dave Manad from Municipal Maintenance. This $25,000 is going to be allocated for looking to repair all the rot damage and everything on the old town offices.
May I have a vote from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6-0 to 1. The Finance Committee supports the restoration work of the old town offices. The investment in the painting of the old town hall offices was stopped after prep work in a repainting contract. It became apparent that considerable restoration of clapboards, trim, and windows was needed to arrest further deterioration and to put this building in a position to gain full benefit from the prior approved painting.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 21? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to appropriate from the Community Preservation Unallocated Fund $25,000 to complete the preservation of the old town offices. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Can I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $14,500 from free cash to the Board of Assessors expenses for the purpose of funding personal property reevaluation. Can I have a... I'm sorry, I... Did someone say a second? Thank you. To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, this article seeks a transfer of $14,500 from free cash to fund personal property valuation vendor RRC for the triennial revaluation.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0 to 0, and the recommendation is similar to the town administrators.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 4? Seeing no one's... Oops, we have someone coming down. Gentleman on my left?
Yes, Carbone, Precinct One. Sorry, Mrs. Moderator. What is free cash?
To answer the question? Ladies and gentlemen, it's a very honest and it is a very good question.
It's an excellent question. Actually, if you look in your blue packet at the annual town meeting, they have all the definitions in there. I can read it off specifically, but what it is, at the end of the year, they take our balances, and essentially, what we brought in for revenues and our expenses, whatever's left over is free cash in our general fund. And the Department of Revenue certifies that.
And again, that could be used anywhere?
Yes, that needs to be appropriated through town meeting, so it can be used for any lawful purpose. We do have a policy that at least 50% of it should be put into the stabilization fund, and the rest should be used for capital items or one-time purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 4? Seeing no one standing... On my right? Donna Lambert, Precinct 2. Just a question, how much do we have in free cash? To answer the question?
It was certified at $874,000, and I'm going to forget off the top of my head the last three, so I can look it up for you, but a little over $874,000.
Thank you. Anything further to be said on the question? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to transfer the sum of $14,500 from free cash to the Board of Assessors for the purpose of property revaluation. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? We have some gentlemen up in the back. If you need seats, there are a couple of seats down front here if you'd like to have a seat. Down here in the middle, there's a couple. Article 23. I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund the sum of $59,000 to remove and replace underground plumbing at Building 1 at the Wareham Housing Authority Agawam Village Complex located at 57 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Massachusetts. I have a motion in a second. To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator?
On my left?
Paul Power, ladies chairman of the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority operates 40 units of affordable public housing at what's known as Agawam Village. The plumbing in all of those buildings is leaking and causing deterioration in the floors, so that the plumbing needs to be replaced totally at this time to prevent further destruction and deterioration of the buildings and to allow us to continue in the long term, to continue housing residents there, and also to keep the property values up in town and the surrounding values, and also to keep the town's quota of affordable housing from deteriorating further. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 5-1 to 0, and the Finance Committee supports this community preservation restoration spending, and the funds will be used as described by the Housing Authority.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 23? Mr. Power, ladies, I believe you have someone behind you that would like to speak. Thank you.
Angela Dunham, Precinct 3, CPC Chair. Community Preservation voted 5-0-0 in support of this article.
Thank you. On my right? Mr. Holmes?
Madam Moderator, thank you. Through you to Town Council, I think I asked this question before. Is this a proper and legal use of CPA funds to repair? Or is this considered repair, maintenance to a state-owned facility, Mr. Power?
To answer the question, if you so wish.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker and members of the meeting. The state has set out a guideline that reflects changes that were made in the Community Preservation Funds Act. And the guidance that the state has given is that unlike in the past, community preservation funds can be used for affordable housing. Now, they can be used for creation of affordable housing, that's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with the question of whether this specific type of repair is allowed. And what the state has said is that community preservation money can be used to preserve affordable housing. And the state goes on to opine that preservation is not purely matters of cosmetic repair, but involves repairs that preserve the structure, repairs that if they weren't made, would cause the structure to deteriorate and render the unit uninhabitable. It appears that a repair of this type, as I understand it, and as it has been explained to me by the Housing Authority, would, if not made, endanger the structure of the units. And if that is the case, then this would be a permitted use of community preservation funds.
Madam Moderator?
Thank you. Just a minute, Mr. Power. On my left?
Madam Moderator, if I may, I think that the problem results from the use of the word repair or maintenance. This is a long-term capital improvement, which will extend the life of the building. Therefore, it's not a repair, and it will prevent the building from being closed down, boarded up, and losing housing units like in Wareham, like we have across the state. So therefore, by definition in the statute, it qualifies as preservation under the law.
Thank you. Paul, I believe there's someone behind you that wishes to speak.
Hi, Madam Moderator. Jackie Hickey, Administrator for the Wareham Housing Authority. Through you to Mr. Holmes' comment, state buildings. In 1962, the Wareham Housing Authority was voted in by a town meeting vote and certified by the Attorney General. We all own Wareham Housing Authority. The citizens of the town of Wareham own Wareham Housing Authority. We do receive state subsidies to help in the preservation and repair of our buildings, along with other, any other taxpayer monies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 23? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. The motion before you is that the town vote to appropriate from Community Preservation the sum of $59,000 to remove and replace underground plumbing at Agawam Village. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. I have a motion, please? I move that the town vote to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation, sale of cemetery lots and graves, the sum of $90,000 to be expended by the cemetery commissioners for cemetery building repairs subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen as provided by General Law, Chapter 114, Section 27. I have a motion in a second to speak to the article?
This article seeks the authorization to fund and repair the maintenance garage at Center Cemetery in the amount of $90,000 from receipts reserved for appropriation, sales of lots and graves account. These restricted funds can only be used for cemetery purposes. If the project costs less than the $90,000, the funds would need to be returned to the same account. With the previous vote taken out of it, the current balance is $183,000. With the previous vote taken out of it, the current balance is $183,608. If this transfer were to be made, there'd be $93,608 left in the account.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0. And we were just, in addition to what the Administrator said, discussions are ongoing with trade schools to use this as an educational project which would significantly reduce the cost. However, to take the project on, the full amount needs to be available. These funds are restricted to be used only by the Commissioners for the improvement and care of the town cemeteries. The balance in the reserve, well, he gave that already, so I'll save you that, but the Finance Committee encourages favorable action.
Thank you. I do believe that this has gone before the Capital Planning Committee. Nothing further to be said. I want, on my left?
Irving Russell, Precinct 6. Yes, Madam Moderator, through you, is this inclusive of all of the cemeteries in town? Are they all maintained by this grant or through this same fund?
To answer the question.
Agawam, Great Neck.
His question, if the funding of this account covers all of the cemeteries?
All of the public cemeteries, none of the private cemeteries. So anything like that would just be public. We listed them off in the previous article.
You listed them off, okay. Didn't see that. And this money was accumulated through sales of cemetery plots?
To answer the question.
Agawam Center and Long Neck.
I believe you had a second question?
Yes, second question was, this fund, the $180,000, is that what you stated? That was accumulated by sales of the cemetery plots?
Yes, sales of lots and graves, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Am I right, Mr. Holmes?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I'm trying to get clarification here as well, because this has changed from what we were handed out.
Can you speak into the microphone, Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, what it says is that it's for one garage repair, and then on the screen you have something different. I think that's causing confusion here.
Cemetery, the cemetery building repairs?
Yeah, this one here talks about a cemetery garage, and that one doesn't talk about the garage at all. This is for general repairs to all cemeteries, is that what this is for? No, what is it for, please?
To answer the question.
That's what I'm asking.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, we have a lot of conversations going on.
I addressed you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to know what this is for.
To answer the question.
To answer the question, it says the sum of $90,000 to be expended by the Cemetery Commissioners for cemetery building repairs, and it is that, it is the center garage.
So, thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you then again to the answerer of the question. It costs $90,000 to repair a maintenance garage? The pictures we saw, really, it's a bulldoze job. You could put up a new maintenance garage for half that cost. To answer the question, are you pointing the other way? Madam Moderator?
To answer the question.
David M. Nod, Mr. Maintenance. This is just an estimate, this is really a restoration, that's all-new doors, windows, electrical. These have bathroom facilities in there, redoing plumbing, some masonry work. At its current state, the roof has collapsed and is unusable, so that's what we're looking to do, restore the whole thing. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 19? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. This requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation sales of cemetery lots, $90,000 to be expended for the repair of a cemetery building. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article 20, may I have a motion?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Unallocated Fund under the category of Open Space Recreation, the sum of $29,000 for Wareham Little League Field Complex Restoration.
Second. To speak to the article, I believe we have someone from the Little League who is not a registered voter that Mr. Tropiano would like to ask courtesy of the floor for, or if someone else wishes to speak to it?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
To speak to the article?
I'd like to ask, the courtesy of the floor, for Mr. Coronto? DeCanto?
Mr. DeCanto. Ladies and gentlemen, with your permission, we have a representative from the Wareham Little League who wishes to address this article. If I have no objection, we will allow Mr. DeCanto to speak to this article. Mr. DeCanto?
I'm Corino DeCanto, I'm the president of Wareham Little League. This year, I took over Little League, and we're trying to make some changes to the league. Safety is our main issue, for the kids to be safe. As some of you may know, the Little League complex was built on a dump site. The remnants of the dump site are beginning to rise to the top of the surface, which is bringing shards of glass up where the kids walk through and play. So we would like the funding to remove the glass and put a new surface over that. We would lay screening over the old surface and then put a new layer of dirt, which would not allow glass to come up from the bottom. We're also trying to fix one of the baseball fields that was built. It's not usable right now, we're trying to fix it so we can use all fields in our complex. We also have some issues going on with fencing that has deteriorated from the beginning of the fencing being there, so the fences are breaking and becoming unsafe and sharp edges, as well as the fencing protecting material that we put on top of the fence. So that's why we're asking for the money.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen now, Mr. Tropiano?
You'd like that now?
Yes.
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
Thank you. May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 6 to 1 to 0. I'm just seeing if there was anything new. Our recommendation is the same, it's already been discussed.
Thank you. On my left?
Angela Dunham, Precinct 3, CPC Chair. Community Preservation voted 5-0-0 to support this article.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 20? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for the-
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I right? Sorry, I missed that.
Fran Vasino, Precinct 4. I was a president of Little League many years ago, and I just don't understand, we used to fund it through ourselves. I'm kind of confused on how this is becoming a town project now. We've dealt with projects within our system. We charge, you know, fees, and we used it. That's my question, I mean, how did this become a town project?
To answer the question, Mrs. Dunham?
CPC law changed recently, in the last couple of years, to allow us not only to purchase land for recreation, but now we may also support it. And so this is an allowable use under CPC law, CPA law, excuse me, that anyone who is looking to support a recreational project can come and apply for funds. So it was brought to us as an application, we reviewed it, it passed CPC law, and we were able to fund it.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Am I right? Is there anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote on Article 20. The motion before you is that the town vote to appropriate from Community Preservation $29,000 for the Wareham Little League Field Complex Restoration. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous, it passes by a majority. If we do this one, will Mother Nature please send some warm weather? May I have a motion for Article 5, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $300,000 from free cash to the snow and ice account.
Have a second. To speak to this article, please?
This article seeks to transfer $300,000 from free cash to the snow and ice budget line to help reduce the deficit. $192,000 was budgeted for FY 2014 snow and ice removal, and as of this writing, the total expenditures have totaled $548,986, resulting in a $356,986 deficit. It should be known that snow and ice is the only budget line that we can legally go into deficit. If it does go into deficit, what it does is it affects next year's free cash. So if you are going to have $300,000 in free cash and you had a $200,000 deficit, the next year, you would only have $100,000. And the current balance of free cash after the other transfers is $756,541. If we transferred the $300,000 out, it would bring it to $456,541. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0-0. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article as an acceptable use of free cash for a one-time expense. Snow and ice is the only budgeted line item that is allowed to go into deficit spending, but the town still needs to pay its bills.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my right?
Eddie Pesevich, Precinct 1. We're taking $300,000 in free cash, but the deficit's $356,986. Why aren't we taking out the $356,986?
Because altogether, we wouldn't have enough free cash to also do the stabilization, so we're allowing that deficit to roll over. I did speak to the Department of Revenue, and obviously, we want to have as much money in our stabilization fund, and our feeling is what we'll have for free cash next year with the way we're trending, that we should be able to take that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 5? Seeing no one else standing, I will now call for the vote to transfer the sum of $300,000 from free cash to the snow and ice account. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? It passes unanimously. I think we have officially ended winter. By a unanimous vote. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to make the following transfers from various line items within the FY 2014 operating budget, more specifically listed in the chart on this slide.
I have a second to speak to the article.
Madam Moderator, thank you, and I apologize, we had trouble with this slide earlier. I was just trying to double-check that the total is correct. However, the rest of the numbers in there are, so what I'd like to do is go over them, and I apologize for any issue with that. The first, we will call that Transfer A, which is from the unemployment line. The unemployment line currently has $158,209 in it. We're seeking to transfer $43,500. That would leave a balance of $114,709. We will transfer to the Veterans Expense Line, which has $33,054. The increase will be to $76,554. The Veterans Expense is something that we cannot control. It depends on how many veterans are registered within the town and what their needs are. We did receive some information from the Veterans Agent, but it would really be more of a personal nature, and I would not read that out tonight. Transfer B, we will use the Animal Control salaries in the amount of $17,000. The current balance is $27,239. Unemployment, with the current balance after the previous transfer of $114,709, we'll seek to transfer out $54,000, which will leave a balance of $60,709. We will transfer to the Police salaries, $71,000. That will make their, that'll increase their salary line to $1,487,165, or the balance in those accounts. Throughout the years, throughout the year, you've heard what we spoke about with the police issues, from loss in staff to the retirements. Retirements alone have cost over $121,000. Bringing the police budget within a $71,000 deficit, or bringing it in within $71,000, while we always strive for a zero, is something that I do commend the interim police chief and appreciate all his efforts. At the previous year, we were probably about four times higher than that, so thank you very much. Workers' comp, the current balance is $33,540. We seek to transfer out $1,700, leaving a balance of $31,840. We will transfer that to the Selectmen's Salary Line, which will increase that to We had a long-term absence within the department, and in order to fund it for several weeks during the liquor license time, we did bring in an additional staff member for those periods. Short-term interest, Item D. The current balance is $50,000. We will seek to transfer $5,200, leaving a $44,800 balance. Long-term interest, to long-term interest, which has a current balance of $214,500. That will increase that to $219,700. In the fall town meeting, we transferred money from the long-term interest account to the, for an additional purpose. However, it looks like we will have left that short by $5,200, and I apologize for the miscalculation to this body. Unemployment, we will, we have a balance of $60,709. We're seeking to transfer $2,000, which will leave the balance $58,709, to health salaries. That will bring health salaries up to $44,978. This resulted, this is the result of a staff member within that department and the contractual obligation of the raise. Planning salaries, $88,479 is the current balance. We're seeking to transfer $5,000 out to the Assessor Professional Services Line, which will increase it to $13,617. This is for the purpose of mapping. This will help us with the triennial revaluation. Although what we have for the bid on that is $3,000, I'm seeking additional $2,000 so that we have enough money to finish out the year and make sure that we are in a proper position for the triennial revaluation.
Mr. Sullivan, just so that we can get the correct figures up on the screen for the audience to see, the top line of $42,000, that should change to $43,500?
Correct. And 17, and they won't be able to do that, that is a PDF, so this is why it's a bit of an issue. So the top, but the top one should be $43,500. The next one, the $17,000 is correct, $54,000 is correct, $1,700 is correct, $52,000 is correct, $2,000 is correct, and $5,000 is also correct. So when you bring the total together, that'll bring it up to $128,400.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted approvable, excuse me, favorable action 8-0-0. The transfers listed are in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B, Subsection B. The Finance Committee recommends the transfers.
Is there anything further to be said? Hold on one second. In order to make this correct, I am going to ask for a friendly amendment to change the total of Line A to $43,500 and to change the total on the bottom to $128,400.
I'll give you that amendment. But I don't have to write it, right?
No.
Okay.
No, we just need you to...
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have Amendment B for you, a friendly amendment to change the dollar amounts so that the first line now reads $43,500 and that the total reads $128,400. I have a motion and a second. Anything further to be said on the amendment? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on the amendment, which is a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The amendment now becomes your main motion, so I will now call for a vote on the main motion as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Article 22. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund the sum of $35,000 to provide safe flooring to the elderly and handicapped residents of Agawam Village.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to speak to the article. On my left, Mr. Palalitis. Angela, are you going to speak to this article?
I'm just going to give the CPC vote, if that's okay.
Well, let's have Mr. Palalitis speak to the article first, please.
Madam Moderator, as previously stated, the Wareham Housing Authority has forty units of elderly affordable housing at Agawam Village. The flooring and subflooring is deteriorating to the point that some of the units, the floors are falling through and we're...
Can you speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Palalitis?
The forty units of housing at Agawam Village, the flooring is deteriorating and destroying to the point of some of the floors are falling through. We're shoring them up on a temporary basis. And again, it's because of the leaky plumbing and the dirt crawl space underneath, which is causing the deterioration. So by this extended capital improvement, it'll extend the life of the property and continue housing for the residents there into the future.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four zero to zero.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, five to two to zero. The Finance Committee recommends this expenditure of community preservation funds. The flooring represents a safety and health hazard. This is not the total cost of the structural repairs and represents approximately 10% of the total cost of the project. The state will provide the balance of the funding.
Thank you. On my left, Mrs. Dunham?
Thank you. Angela Dunham, CPC Chair. Community Preservation voted five zero zero in favor of this article.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 22? On my left?
Mrs. Moderator, Carboni, Precinct One. Would it be possible to hear the two opposing finance members' opinions?
Does the Finance Committee wish to give your minority report?
My only reason for opposing this, my seven years on the Finance Committee, I've heard the issues of Agawam. And to be perfectly honest, I don't understand why the state hasn't stepped in further, and I don't know how it ever got that bad. It just makes me sick. I think they were putting a plug in the dyke, and we're not making it any better. And it just saddens me, but I know it's a proper use for community preservation funding, and I wouldn't oppose anybody's support of it. It was just a personal issue for me.
Mr. Worthing?
I opposed it because I think it's a maintenance item rather than a restoration item. I went, I was in Building One, saw the floor. There's some cracked asbestos floor tiles, but there is no danger that I was going to go through the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? On my left?
Madam Moderator, that was the inside floor, not the subfloor. And secondly, I agree with Madam Finance Person. Unfortunately, in the past several many years, the state has not paid any attention to Agawam Village, our Redwood. Not so much because they didn't want to, but because there was no effort on the side of the Housing Authority members to seek funding. Unfortunately, when those are capital funds, when they're up for so many years and when they're used, if they're not used in Wareham, they go someplace else. Now that the town in this new board has shown an interest, we have gotten support from the town with the generators, from the CEDA board. The Commonwealth is now getting behind us, and they're going to fund probably $600,000, $700,000 worth of additional improvements. They're going to put a roof on the building that they didn't put on in 2010, and they're going to do the outside of another building on that property, including windows, stoops, doors, et cetera. So we're trying to make up for lost time and restore that property to the quality it should be for the residents that live in the property.
Thank you. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. For those who are not familiar with community preservation funds, those monies are very specific as to what they can be used for. So you hear us say it's an allowable use. They can be used for open space, historic preservation, affordable housing, and now recreation. So we're very limited in what we can use them for. We're trying very hard to use them in places that they're desperately needed. And we consider this a good use because it's a kickoff for part of the project. For our $59,000 is our contribution. No, which one do we add? $35,000 on this one, but it's a part of the bigger project. And as you can see, we now have work planned that will take care of some of the other issues there with state and other monies. So yes, we were in favor of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I, you know, I don't, I have an issue with the state, but I need to clear the record here. As long as Mr. Bowen, I would ask the same question, because I think when we spoke about this, we would ask him those three questions tonight so that the people could feel comfortable with their voting for. As to the recent comment about, since I've been on the Board of Selectmen and I got here four years ago, I can recall several meetings, not none, sir, with State Senator Mark Pacico, State Representative Susan Williams Gifford, the people from the State Housing Authority, Mr. Andrews, our town administrator, and I believe the CEDA, either Chairman of the Board of CEDA or the CEDA Director were at those meetings. And the answer from the state was that they didn't have the money, not that the town of Wareham did not request the money. And I was personally there, and I can attest to that, sir. So this isn't, this is a good thing to do, as long as Mr. Bowen okay's that it's lawful and legal to do it under the new law. But I don't want to take any cheap shots at the pass because in the Housing Authority, people were at those meetings, and they did request the money, sir, because I was sitting there. So I just want to clear that, clear that record so that we're not stomping on...
Did you see the paperwork?
Just a minute, John.
Yes, sir.
Just a minute, just a minute.
Yes, sir, I sat right there.
Mr. Holmes, just a minute.
Through you, Madam Moderator. I sat right there and saw the request done.
Mr. Holmes, do you have a question? Did you have a specific question?
Oh, to Mr. Bowen, just to clarify the three Housing Authority questions, as we asked him to do at the Board of Selectmen.
To answer the question?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, to the previous speaker and to the meeting. Each one of these requests presents a specific set of facts that has to be analyzed in terms of what the law allows. What the law allows is CPC funds to be used for preservation. The guidance that the state has provided us with, I'll say is sparse, but I think we can draw at least this much from it. CPC money cannot be used for cosmetic improvements. So for example, as pertinent to this article, if this is a case where flooring is being replaced for cosmetic reasons, I'm pretty clear that that would not be a permissible use of CPA funds. CPA funds can be used only to preserve the structure. You can read into that repairing structural defects that would eventually render the property uninhabitable. So that's what the law says. I think it's up to the proponents to frame their request in terms of what the law allows. Thank you.
On my left, the lady on my left?
In response to Jackie Hickey, Town of Wareham Housing Authority Administrator, in response, you through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Malkurn, just to clarify, he was not in Building One. Nope. Oh, do I, can I only comment to Mr. Holmes's?
Just to the gentleman's comment, we shouldn't reference people by their names.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, to the comment, okay.
To the previous comment.
Previous comments, the gentleman did not visit Building One, it was Building Five. And then also to the previous comment about the money with the state senator, state delegations, Housing Authority, when they were looking at that, at that time, they were looking at the total amount of renovations for all of it. It totaled over $12 million. So yes, they did not have that money. Every three years, there is a fund of money that the Wareham Housing Authority Board and Director could request through the proper agencies, and it wasn't, for whatever reason, not used, not done, and not fully understood how to get to those channels. So all those people that we elect as elected officials understand the mechanism is through the Department of Housing and Community Development's capital improvement projects. So as much as I understand the frustrations of everyone here, and especially trying to, we are now trying to make those buildings whole and integrity, with integrity. It is an overwhelming balance to go to the state with $12,100,000 when for fifty years, we've done nothing to those buildings. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Cliff Sylvia, Precinct One. I'd like to move the question.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion before us to move the question. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it passes. You now have before you the motion to appropriate from the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund $35,000 to provide safe flooring at Agawam Village. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Number two. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $440,000 to the Stabilization Fund.
A motion and a second to speak to the article?
This article adheres to the Board of Selectmen's policy that at least 50% of free cash shall be transferred to the Stabilization Fund. This transfer request is for $440,000. There's currently $411,435 in the Stabilization Fund. A properly funded stabilization account helps with many items, such as the town's bond rating.
I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please.
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four zero to zero.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven zero to zero. The Massachusetts Department of Revenue recommends 5% to 6% of the town's gross income to be placed in Stabilization Fund annually. A stabilization fund is the town's savings account. Monies placed into the accumulated, into and accumulated in the Stabilization Fund carry forward from one fiscal year to the, to another. And the interest earned from the investment of monies to this fund remain with that fund. In previous years, Wareham has not done this, and as a result, the town has had to borrow money for capital projects or ignored them completely. This policy has proved very detrimental to Wareham's stability, infrastructure, and fiscal outlook. Funding Wareham Stabilization Fund with the $440,000 this year and similar allotments every year going forward will allow Wareham to save money for future years and avoid borrowing at high interest rates for capital projects. To use this fund requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. Thus, oversight by the taxpayers is assured. Correct use of Stabilization Fund avoids having to incur debt and saves the interest cost of borrowing. A win-win for the taxpayers of Wareham.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article two? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. This does require a two-thirds vote. I am going to try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, it passes by a two-thirds unanimous vote. Article 10. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to confirm the collective bargaining agreement between the town and Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council Union 1249 of the Laborers International Union of North America Wareham Wastewater Treatment Plant Union.
I have a motion and a second. To speak to the article, please.
Thank you. We are seeking to have town meeting confirm this contract. It has some issues in there, such as bringing the, some issues we resolved, we believe. Overtime, the employee will be eligible overtime only 24 hours after the shift for which they called in sick is ended. It will eliminate sick leave, buyout on retirement, resignation, or death for employees hired after July 1, 2014. It will reduce the amount of vacation days for employees hired after July 1, 2014, that they will not accumulate more than 20, 20 days per year. It also satisfies that the employees working on Saturday and Sunday, that will now be a normal shift and will not be time and a half or double time. However, there will be a $10 per DM shift differential. And this contract is for three fiscal years. This fiscal year, FY 15, FY 16. And it's one of the first contracts that we will have that's going out into the future, and we will not have to be right back at the bargaining table. For FY 14, the COLAs are 1% at the beginning of the year and 1% at the midpoint. It is a net effect of 1.5% to the town. The same for FY 15 and the same for FY 16. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please? May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 8-0 to 0.
Is there anything to be said on Article 10? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote on Article 10. Article 10 is before you to confirm the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the wastewater treatment plant union. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. I believe this is our last one. You have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to petition the Great and General Court for special legislation authorizing four year-round all-alcoholic pouring licenses, two to be excised on a premise described as Rosebrook Place, the plan of which is on file in the office of the town clerk, one for 3155 Cranberry Highway East Wareham, and one for Toby Road and Route 28 Plaza.
Have a motion in a second to speak to the article.
This article seeks permission for the town to petition the Massachusetts Legislature for four year-round liquor licenses. These licenses would be above the number of licenses that the town currently has authorized.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 4-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 7-0 to 0. This article will petition the Legislature to allow the town to use four new alcohol pouring licenses to qualified establishments in the new developments in the 195 Route 28 area of Wareham. This action is a key step to create and attract tenants to these locations. All residents and property owners will benefit from additional non-residential growth, which will increase the town's tax base. Additionally, these developments will become destination points for the region, which will spur growth to ancillary businesses throughout the town.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 26? Am I right?
Sandy Slaven, Precinct Three, can you tell me what business resides at 3155 Cranberry Highway?
To answer the question?
The lobster pot.
Thank you. Is there anything further on Article 26? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote on Article 26 to petition the General Court for additional liquor licenses. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our special town meeting. I'll now accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The spring town meeting is adjourned. We now will return to our annual meeting. These are the articles that are in your blue warrant. Again, we traditionally pull the articles by lottery, however, given that we have the Superintendent of Schools from Upper Cape Regional Vocational School, who does have to attend several town, town meetings, it has been a matter of courtesy that we take up the Upper Cape Regional Vocational Technical Budget to allow Mr. Dutch to present his article on our first night so that he can attend the other meetings that he needs to go to. So, we will go to the Upper Cape article, which is Article Eight. May I have a motion on Article Eight, please?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,747,881 to fund its share of the operating and capital costs of the Upper Cape Cod Regional Vocational Technical High School District for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
Have a motion in a second to speak to the article, Mr. Dutch.
Robert Dutch, Superintendent, Upper Cape Tech, through the moderator. The appropriation this year is approximately $248,000 less than last year. It is based on the budget developed by the school committee, and then the assessment is then determined based on the enrollment of Wareham students as a percentage of the total population, Upper Cape Tech. I'd be happy to answer questions once we're at that point.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 5-0-0. This article authorizes payment of Wareham's fiscal year 2015 assessment from the Upper Cape Regional Vocational High School.
Are there any questions on the Upper Cape budget? Am I right?
Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct One. Through you, Madam Moderator, to the superintendent, there is a five-year budget here, and are we to reasonably expect the budget in 2019 to be half of what it is today?
To answer his question?
Actually, can I just?
Is that the wrong article?
Answer that, comment on that? That is not a five-year budget, that is a five-year projection.
Okay, so, do we reasonably expect the projection to be half of what it is today?
Are you on Article Eight, Mr. Heaney?
I don't know. I thought I was.
This is the Upper Cape budget.
Oh, all right. My bad.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, ladies and gentlemen. Is there anything further to be said on Article Eight? Seeing anyone standing, I will now call for the vote on Article Eight. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dutch. Okay, we're going to, as another procedural matter, Article Number 14 and Article Number 15, 15, I'm sorry, 15 and 16. 15 and 16 are regular housekeeping articles that come before town meeting every year. They generally do not have any questions, they generally do not spur a debate. If no one has any objection, I will accept a motion to take Article 15 and 16 as a consent agenda.
I move that Articles numbered 15 and 16 be taken as a consent agenda, and further I move that the town vote to approve Articles 15 and 16 as written in the Finance Committee Warrant Report Handbook.
Have a motion in a second. Anything to be said on the consent agenda? Generally, there is no discussion, so I will now call for your vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. We have, pulled by lottery, Article Number Six. It is quarter past nine, town meeting ends at 10 o'clock. If there is no objection to the body, I would suggest that we not start Article Six at this late hour, but that we take it up as our first article tomorrow night, which would give us adequate time to spend on the budget, because at the same time, we are going to take up Article Seven, and I don't think that we can accomplish that in the short period of time that we have. Madam Moderator? Do I have any objections to that?
I object.
You need to be so loud, I'm sorry. You want to do the budget?
I suggest that we have a crowd here who is vitally interested in this budget. I suggest that we stay and work through this. We've put a lot of time and effort into it. There are a lot of people here who want to hear this, and I think that we can stay here and work. If discussion goes on too hard, we can then move to adjourn, but I suggest that we waive the 10 o'clock adjournment hour and continue on through this article.
I am going to ask for a consensus of the body. I have asked, the question is to whether or not you would like to hold Article Six as our first article tomorrow night. Mrs. Donahue has suggested that we continue on and stay until it gets done. So, what I would ask now is for a consensus vote to hold Article Six until tomorrow night. I'd like to see what the body feels. All those in favor of holding Article Six and having it be our first budget article tomorrow night, please, please say aye.
Point of order.
All those opposed?
No.
Madam Moderator, point of order.
Just state your point.
Yes, rather than deliberately state the time that this article would be taken up tomorrow, you would reinstitute it in the lottery system.
No, it would come up, because it's already been drawn, it would come up as the first article.
Well, that would be defeating your whole lottery system, and therefore stacking, stacking the meeting for that specific purpose.
Mr. Irving, as a procedural matter, the moderator has that decision to make. However, I do question the vote, so I am going to take a hand count for a consensus vote as to whether you wish to put Article Six off until tomorrow night. All those in favor, please raise your cards. In the front? In the front, John? To my right?
81.
I'm sorry, 81, 81?
81, that's correct.
Thank you. And on my left?
56.
56. All of those who would like to stay until we get finished with Articles Three and, Article Keep those cards up till the tellers tell you to put them down, and hold them up high. In the front? Front 39, to my right?
45.
To my right, 45. In the center?
61.
61. And on my left? The consensus vote is 172 to 163. So, we will come back tomorrow evening with Article Six, but we will stay until 10 o'clock. We still will finish tonight's business.
Madam Moderator, I believe, point of order, I believe you have a mathematical error on the no votes. I think it's supposed to be 152, not 172.
I have 172. We have 11 in the front?
Plus 81.
It's 92.
172.
170, we had 11 in the front?
Right.
24?
35.
No, 81.
No, but 11 and 24 is 35.
Okay, and then 81?
35 and 81 is 116.
And 56, 56.
Oh, 56, I'm sorry, I thought it was 36, my mistake.
So, we have a consensus that we will not take Article Six tonight and stay, but we do have until 10 o'clock to continue with our business. For what reason are you standing on my right?
Madam Moderator, I just want to ask if there's any possibility that we could go to 13, so the high school students could be?
Unfortunately, we have a lottery system, and we will stay with the lottery system.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to ask.
May I have a motion? Ladies and gentlemen, please, please, we have a motion coming before us. If you feel the need that you don't want to stay, please do it quietly. Article 14.
I move that the town vote to transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation sales of cemetery lots and graves, the sum of $32,000. Said sum to be expended by the cemetery commissioners for the care, improvement, embellishment, or enlargement of town cemeteries, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen as provided by General Law, Chapter 114, Section 27.
I have a second, I have a motion in a second to speak to the article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The first thing, please, if you look at Article 14, there is a sum of 122,000, we are having, that will be lowered to 32,000. 32. And the 32,000 would be utilized in the following way. $10,000 for headstone repair, $10,000 for survey of Agawam Cemetery and Annex, $5,000 materials needed, stone fertilizer, et cetera, $5,000 for new signage, public notices, postage, et cetera, and $2,000 for the office, folders, copies, preservation of records, et cetera. One thing to be known, this is not money One thing to be known, this is not money that you would spend all at once. These are available for future expenditures. So there's not initially ten thousand dollars worth of immediate headstone repairs. However, to be able to repair them, you do need to have the funds available and that's what they're seeking to do. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable Action 500.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable Action 501. These funds are restricted and they can only be used by the commissioners for improvement and care of town cemeteries.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article fourteen? Seeing no one on my right?
Sandy Slavin Precinct Three, I have a question on the use of the funds for paper copies. I thought there was a policy that said we were to digitize our documents, not continue to make paper copies. It's not going to change my vote, but I just was surprised that we weren't going to digitize the documents at the cemetery. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article fourteen? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. This requires a majority vote. The motion before you is to transfer receipts for the cemetery improvement, embellishment, or enlargement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the revolving funds as printed in the Finance Committee warrant report handbook.
Second.
To speak to Article four?
Madam Moderator, this is a housekeeping article that authorizes the continuance of several revolving funds. The spending limit that you see, such as two hundred thousand, that is the spending limit that they may have. It is not how much would be in the account and that is, that would go to the next year if all those funds are not expended. You'll also see the revenue source listed in there. You'll see what they are available to use, those funds are, and what authority there is to expend those funds. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable Action 500.
Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable Action 600. We support this action. It is basically a housekeeping item. These funds were previously voted by town meetings. This allows departments to use fees that come through their department to help offset some of their costs rather than using line items from the general budget, and this is an allowable source of funding.
Gentlemen, on my right?
Eddie Percivich, Precinct One. The chart, I have problems with the chart. If you look at the chart, COA activities under revenue sources says user fees and fundraising, use of funds, user fees and fundraising. I don't think we're using the funds for user fees and fundraising. If you look at the... Revenue sources, user fees and fundraising, and if you go to the next column, use of funds, it says user fees and fundraising.
Mr. Percivich is correct, and there would be items such as the previous ones, such as program supplies, if they're bringing in an entertainer or something in those lines.
Okay.
It looks like some of these were transposed.
So I would take that as a scribbled error?
Okay, social recreation. I hate to say it, but revenue source, programs, supplies, equipment contracted, instructors, and other related expenses. That's not a revenue source. I think that was transposed also.
I would say most of the revenue sources, if you go down them, it will be user fees, fines and fees, user fees. Social recreation should be user fees or fundraising, recycling. I would say the user fees are some, or fundraising. Shellfish is correct, and Board of Health is correct.
Right, so there's three that have to be changed around. COA activities, social recreation, and recycling.
Really, they would not have to be corrected from the motion. The important part of this is the spending limit, and that is really the only important part of it.
Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article four? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote. You have before you to approve the transfers as printed in the FinCom report, except for the scribbled error. This calls for a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the handout.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. To speak to the article? On my left?
I think this is the first time I've won the lottery. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, George Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. What you see before you in the handout is a bylaw that would create a transfer of development rights. That, in a nutshell, is the ability for a property owner or a group of property owners to transfer their rights to develop their property to another location and preserve that piece of property with a conservation restriction. What this does for the town is it promotes development in areas of the town that are already developed. They already have roads, possibly sewer. Their infrastructure is already in place, so it doesn't add additional cost to the town to maintain that. And it also provides that land that is currently undeveloped stays that way. It preserves natural resources, habitat, environmentally sensitive areas, watershed areas. It gives us development like we've seen, but with the added benefit of preserving lands for the future. That process could promote possibly senior developments, retirement communities, multifamily units. There's a, what we see is a great many ways that this could benefit the town. It could benefit individual property owners by providing them with a means to preserve their property for the future, for some people desire to do, but sometimes financial factors inhibit that. As I said earlier, it benefits us by putting development where we already have the services. It benefits the developer by not having to repeat those services and build miles of roadway that the town would have to maintain in the future. And what they commonly call sprawl, spreading out your services way too thin. This bylaw, the document you see before you, is a group effort. We've had input from SERPED, we've had input from our attorney, John Witten, as well as Bob Iafredis, our Director of Inspection Services, Charlie Rowley, our Consulting Engineer, Dave Bichette, the Conservation Agent, Ken Ferrara, the Chairman of the Board of Appeals, Alan Slavin, Selectmen, and input from Ed Percivich, Citizens, and SERPED, if I didn't mention that before. I know there's some of the frequently asked questions regarding this is somehow it's going to put bad development in your community. I would venture to guess that the majority of the people in the room don't know what kind of development could happen in their area of the town, under the auspices of Forty-B or some other development. We're not seeking to create bad development. This is a tool that gives us the opportunity to create planned, good development that the town and the developer equally benefit, hopefully a little more on the town side. I know the other, some of the other instances that are questions that have come up have been the need, the market need for this. We at the Planning Board don't feel that it's our place to expend funds to check the market. That would be up to a developer to decide whether he wants to go forward with this if the market was there for it. If we wait until the market's there, then we've already missed the boat. The Planning Board did hold a public hearing on this on March 24th, and we voted three-one-zero in favor of moving this forward, and I will reserve the rest of my time to answer any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable Action 400.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable Action 600. We support this article because transfer of development rights is a regulatory strategy that uses private market forces to accomplish too smart growth objectives. First, open space is permanently protected for water supply, agricultural, habitat, recreational, and other purposes via the transfer of some or all of the development rights that would otherwise have occurred in these sensitive places to more suitable locations. Second, the other locations, such as villages and town centers, vacant and underutilized properties, can benefit as the development potential from the protected resource areas is transferred to them. In Wareham, this means that we have a tool to protect undeveloped open space and to absorb that development into areas which already have infrastructure in place. Conventional zoning has failed to prevent and is often the cause of suburban sprawl in Massachusetts. Even highly valued areas of forest or farmland are zoned for low-density residential or residential agricultural development. At the same time, current zoning often does not allow for density levels appropriate to a vibrant commercial and mixed-use district. Traditional planning techniques to address these situations, such as large land acquisition in open space areas, or wholesale rezoning of downtown centers, are politically sensitive, they're costly, and they're not practical for Wareham.
Thank you. Gentlemen, on my left?
Madam Moderator, I would move to amend this to further study.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion before us for further study. To speak to the motion to further study this article, Mr. Russell?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I just became, I may have been lapsed in not being aware of this prior to tonight, but I think it's so encompassing and so involved, it just poses too many unanswered questions at this time, and I think that possibly the people should be given more of an opportunity to look at this in its long-term ramifications.
Gentlemen, am I right to speak to the motion for further study only?
Yes. Eddie Percivich, Precinct One. As many of you know, I am usually in favor of transfer development rights, also known as TDR. However, I am not in favor of this proposed TDR bylaw. TDRs in other towns are set up to protect the environment while preserving the quality of life for the residents. The same cannot be said for this one. In fact, this one makes no attempt to do either. At the last Planning Board public hearing dealing with the transfer of development rights, I submitted eight pages of suggested questions, clarifications, additions, deletions, and areas of concern. The Planning Board could not answer the questions, and the vast majority of these issues were ignored. They included the failure of the Planning Board to conduct a real estate market analysis to determine if a transfer development bylaw was even needed or sustainable in Wareham, the inability of the Planning Board to define and explain numerous terms used in the proposed bylaw, the failure of the Planning Board to protect current zoning bylaw residential minimum lot sizes of thirty thousand, forty-three thousand, sixty thousand, and one hundred and thirty thousand square feet by allowing residential minimum lot sizes of five thousand square feet in this proposed bylaw. Rainham requires a ten thousand square foot residential minimum lot size along with town, water, and sewer in their TDR. While five thousand square feet is the state minimum requirement for lot size, most towns have increased the minimum. Five thousand square feet is usually limited to higher density areas...
Twenty seconds.
...such as those found in Boston, Worcester, and Springfield. Madam Moderator, I'd like to ask for two more minutes.
How much time do you need?
Two more. Two more minutes, please.
Two more minutes. Mr. Percivich is asking for two more minutes. I put that question before the voters. All those in favor of giving Mr. Percivich two more minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I believe you have your two minutes.
Thank you. And the fact that the Planning Board is providing developers with an outrageous and unwarranted density bonus of between five hundred and eleven hundred percent of increased density. Plymouth allows a hundred and fifty percent increase in density in their TDR. There are other issues too numerous to address this evening, so I'll confine my comments to Section 570.8, Decision Criteria, found on Page Eight of the Proposed Transfer Development Rights. To paraphrase, quote, "Special permits enabling the transfer of development rights may be granted by the Planning Board upon its written determination that the benefits of the proposed transfer of development rights outweighs the detrimental impact the proposed development would have on the budding lands, neighborhoods, or the town of Wareham." The proposed bylaw readily admits that there will be detrimental impacts using this type of development. The determination that the benefits outweigh the adverse impact of the development is purely subjective and lacks transparency. There are no standards of procedures required by the proposed bylaw for making this determination. There is no requirement for the notification of neighbors who will be negatively impacted by the proposed development. There is no procedure or appeal in the proposed bylaw for the neighbors or abudders in opposition to this development to stop it. This development could occur in almost every residential zone in Wareham and can adversely affect each and every one of us. Once again, it appears that the developers have all of the rights and the benefits and the residents will just have to live with the detrimental impacts. Town meetings should reject what is not in the best interest of the residents. As the abudders and neighbors of this proposed development...
Twenty seconds.
...and increased density, our health, safety, and general welfare, along with the value of our homes, may be adversely affected, and we receive no benefit. A market analysis should be done to determine what need, if any, exists, and if so, how can we get accomplished without degrading the quality of existing residents' lives and property?
Time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I right, Mr. Titelbaum, to speak to the motion for further study only, please?
Yes, I would urge the body to vote down the motion for further study. This TDR has been in the works for a long, long time. People first started looking at this in nineteen ninety-nine. I know this because my mother was part of that process. There were lengthy negotiations with large land developers at the time. The outcomes of those were not favorable to the town. They never were accepted by town meeting, I don't believe, except one other occasion, that they were even brought to town meeting, because those TDRs were, as was suggested with this one, which I don't believe is the case, huge giveaways. In those TDRs, you had net usable land area, which included cranberry bogs, which included wetlands, otherwise undevelopable properties. You don't see that in this one. As far as the density bonuses go, I would submit to you that good, clean, new residential development on a five thousand square acre, I don't know, five thousand square foot lot, rather, is certainly preferable to a lot of the blight we've seen in town. If we want to attract people to rebuild our urban areas, and by that I mean our villages, if we want to, which aren't included in this yet, by the way, because we haven't solved the parking problem, the long-term vision is to include the village zoning districts in this as well. But if we ever want to get to that, we need a basic template to get it done. This TDR provides for that. It was drafted in concert with one of the state's leading land use attorneys. The comments that it is faulty because it leaves some discretion in the Planning Board, any board that reviews these things is going to have some discretion. There are no hard and fast rules.
Twenty seconds.
And the comments that it's flawed because the Planning Board is supposed to do its job by saying, "This is what's good, this is what's bad." job by saying, "This is what's good, this is what's bad." If you go to any Planning Board meeting, this is what they do with every single application for anything that comes before them. So I would urge you to vote down the amendment and to approve the bylaw itself.
Thank you. Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm just, you know, I want everyone-
You need to speak right into, you almost have to get right up to it.
Now? Is that good?
That's good.
Okay. I just want everyone to, you know, think that, to vote this down, because a lot of time, public hearings, Planning Board meetings, went into this, and I'm talking about years and years and years, and I'm kind of appalled that someone can come up and just say that they want further study because they're not prepared for what is going on here tonight. I mean, if you know the time and the hours and the years that have gone into this, and for someone to get up here and stand up, "Oh, this is the first I've seen, and I'm not prepared, I want further study," I take that very much to heart, and I think it's a slap on every person on every board's face. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my right?
Peter Balzerini, Precinct 3. I have a question about this that I've been, haven't really gotten, rolled around in my head, I haven't really got a good answer, but does this mean that if someone owns a five-acre apostle of land in an R60-
Mr. Balzerini?
Yes?
The question before us is whether or not to further study this?
Well, this-
So if you speak to further study somehow-
Well, this has to do with whether or not we want to further study it or not.
Okay.
I think it's relevant to the, to the discussion, because maybe people won't want a further study once they hear what the question is. Well, anyhow, if you own a five-acre apostle of land in an R60 zone and you, and that's the receiving apostle, can someone in a, in an area outside, and say in an R30 zone or an area that has lesser density, come in and put a high-density development on that land right within the R60 zone? Because if that's the case, then what we're going to create here is spot zoning, and it seems to me that over the years, we've spent a lot of time creating zoning areas in the town to prevent spot zoning. And now we're going to authorize it. We're going to transfer development rights from one part of town to another where there's already strict zoning laws in place. I don't understand, if someone has to have an acre and a half of land to build in an R60 zone, and somebody owns five acres next to them, then they'll be able to come in and put 12, you know, 12 housing units on that area right amongst the houses that are built on acre-and-a-half lots? If that's the case, then I think we ought to further study this for many years. And I, you know, I, you know, I take my hat off to all people who've done a lot of things, you know, over the time to put this together, but spending a lot of time on something doesn't necessarily mean it's something we should vote for.
Twenty seconds.
I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, I'd like to respond to some of the issues that have come up, as well as address the further study.
Are you answering specific questions?
No, I'm just pointing out some-
Okay.
As far as the further study goes, we've been looking at this since 2006. There's been several renditions put forward. I think it's time that the body give us some direction. We've been studying this because we thought it was a viable tool to have planned development in the town of Wareham. As to some of the other questions that came up, there are no density bonuses in this bylaw. Those were removed, and all projects would be subject to the public hearing process, which means everybody, all the abudders would be notified and have local input to these projects, whereas if 40B comes in, your local comment is superficial at best, because the state can come in and overrule you on anything. You know, if you have a five-acre piece in your neighborhood, it's subject to all kinds of development. The difference with this is the town gets something back in return, plain and simple. And I would urge you to vote against further study.
Thank you. Gentlemen, am I right?
Yes, Madam, Urban Russell, Precinct 6. Yes, is there a possible example or instance that can be presented where it's, this would truly be beneficial to the town or the townspeople? I mean, there's no elimination of 40B because of the fact that you would implement this thing, because the only way of eliminating 40B is to raise your affordable housing level above 10%, which would put a stop to all of those 40B developments. And that might be more of an effort that needs to be taken place rather than this. I just truly can't comprehend the involvement here, and for it to be presented, there may have been a lot of study. They haven't told me what SERPED said. They haven't told me what the other people that put input, in, that put input, what did they say? They might have been totally contradictory to, to the proposal, but they're not saying that. They're just superficially saying there was input from here, from there, from wherever. So I would definitely support and encourage everyone to take the, the safe effort or position of further study, and if it's worthy enough, it'll come back again.
Mr. McDonald to speak to the further study?
I just have a question for the previous speaker, the one that just spoke. How many of the public hearings have you attended?
Mr. McDonald, that's, that's not appropriate. On my left?
My name is-
Ladies and gentlemen.
My name is Deborah Rose, and I lead in Precinct 3. The way I read this article, and I'm opposed to further study if I understand it correctly, this is a way that this town could possibly get more affordable housing or assisted living, because it might be an incentive for some of these companies that build these facilities to come into town, something that has not happened for a long time, and I have been constantly asking town officials to do something about this. Surrounding towns have plenty of extra elderly housing, and they keep telling me people to go there. I don't want to leave Wareham, but everything is forcing me to leave Wareham.
Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Dave Walton, District 3. I'm very much against putting this on hold. This has been on hold in too many years. What I've said before at this meeting, these meetings, I've said at various meetings, that what the town needs to exist to continue alive is, we need middle-income housing, we need light industry, we need transportation. We're going forward, a little bit of transportation coming in, it's getting better and better. We need to invite people into our town, make it something that's worthwhile, keep putting things on hold, keep worrying about the cranberry bog people are going to buy something, is absolutely ridiculous. We need to move now and make this town grow, and grow peacefully and happily, and this is one way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Percevich, I'm sorry, but you have used all of your time, I can't allow you to speak. You've, you've used actually double time that the body granted you. Gentlemen on my right?
I move the question.
Well, there's actually no one else standing, Mr. Flaherty, so I don't think we need to move the question. The article, the motion that is now before you is an amendment for further study to the transfer of development right, Article 22. So the, the vote now will come on the amendment for further study. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor of further study, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion, the amendment fails. We now go back to the main motion of the transfer of development rights, as presented by the Finance Committee in the handout. Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing no one standing, Mr. Percevich?
Eddie Percevich, Precinct 1. Just a comment on the current bylaw that's up there. There is no requirement for affordable housing in that bylaw. And when I asked at the public hearing of the Planning Board, "How are we ever going to attain our 10% requirement so that we could stop 40B?", the Planning Board said, "We're not going to get to our 10%, affordable housing." This bylaw does not have a requirement that any of this development requires any percentage to be affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 22? Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, and I will admit that I also haven't studied every single detail of this article. I'm in favor of transfer of development rights on principle. There's a lot of land in Wareham that we tend to think of as open space. I live beside a cranberry bog. It's not open space, it's a place that kids can ride their RVs and ATVs and use it, but anytime that owner could sell that land and build on it. So there's a lot of land that we see as we drive around that is open space that could be built on. The idea is to give the tools to the Planning Board to have some control about where that gets built. And I'm not totally clear on the density bonus part of it. I don't think we're quite ready as a society to talk about this yet, but we need more small housing for families that can't afford McMansions. We need to be able to fit in-laws in together. So these refer to housing units, not just houses when you're talking about density bonus. I think a lot of people have worked very hard on this article, and I'd like to see it pass.
Mr. Holmes, before you, before I recognize you, we only have one more minute before 10 o'clock, so I would-
I'll make it 30, 30 seconds.
What's that?
30 seconds.
If you can do it in 30 seconds.
Madam Moderator, I just want to refer to Mrs., to one of the previous speakers. In some of the pictures we saw at the, when we met with the Planning Board to go over this, I mean, you kind of, I wasn't sure what this was at first either, but there were some great village pieces, kind of like onset village is what I put it in my head, the part where the barber is and the, and the cafe shop is with the, you have the residents on top, and a lot of that was affordable, doesn't have to be, but it could be. And really, it, it put great housing in a village atmosphere, and I fully support and encourage support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? We're approaching the hour of 10 o'clock. Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article 22. Before everybody starts going out, please hold right here so we can get this vote counted. Because it is a zoning article, it does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for a unanimous two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a non-counted two-thirds vote. I will accept a motion to adjourn until tomorrow night.
Point of order, I count.
You need seven.
We got seven. We got seven.
Do I, I can't tell if people, if you're leaving, please, I need to be able to tell that there are seven people standing to question the count. Please hold up your cards if you're questioning the count. Okay, we have seven. I will call, I will call for a counted count. All those in favor of Article 22, please raise your cards, hold them up high, keep them up until the tellers have asked you to put them down. In the front?
Forty-six, four-six.
To my right?
Twenty-one.
In the center? To my left?
Thirty-eight.
All those opposed, please raise your cards.
Seven.
To my right?
Twenty-one.
In the center?
Thirty-six.
On my left?
Twelve.
We have 166 in the affirmative, 76 in the negative. We do have a two-thirds vote. This article does pass by a two-thirds majority. I will now accept a motion to adjourn the meeting until tomorrow night until 7:00. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We will see you tomorrow night at 7:00.